...before, some time ago, and that's moving forward who won the contract. Do you have any questions on this streets program?
On his information, he says that the project is projected to last until April of 2016. He's gonna, there're gonna be seven reconstruction streets and fourteen chipped segal streets.
That's what they, that's what they said they were gonna do. Weather for me, it's, it's all based on the weather. We get some more warm weather, because it's pretty cold, not too much rain, it'll be there, but it's all on the weather. So it shouldn't be April, March at the latest. That's what we're hoping to do.
It's pretty fast. It must have a lot of workers, a lot of equipment.
Yes, ma'am. A lot more than, a lot more than we do.
Thank you.
As we move on to his report, we talked about the wastewater division. He's been working on the wastewater treatment plant, the water, wastewater treatment plant, replacement of the clarifier, pump tube, an aerator, floating aerator, lift stations at the river park, and Highway 97, who's seeking to do some things and add details to those. In the park division, we worked on the completion of the park restrooms. They've hired a new person in the parks department. They're seeking bids, because FEDC says they want to spend their $20,000 if they have in their budget. We want to try to use it for the restrooms, so we're seeking three bids for the two bathrooms, one of them being right here by the American Legion, the other being the skate park, which I believe made the front page of the papers. They're really excited about that. So we've come up with some proposals and we'll see and come back to that. We're looking at doing some issues. We're building in some applications from Phelps to install some new lights, to see what we can do on the Sonic Park. We wired it, we wired the driveway, right there where they call their snack bar, and that's another project that'll be coming up before you pretty soon tonight, to enter off of 97 East. Now, Mayor Castillo, as you know, there was an issue with parking when they had soccer games there. Parents were parking on both streets. We don't allow but parking on one side, and hopefully as we go forward, we're trying to negotiate to have a parking lot that we can share with the church, that will discontinue people parking along 97 completely. It's very kind of dangerous. And we've asked and petitioned twice, I believe, before I got here, once after I got here, to have them to lower the speed limit right in that area. And that's not what they wanted. And so we're gonna have to stop having parents to park on that 97. H Street was a project that you had to have a special meeting about. That's moving forward. It's almost done, but there was an issue with underlying utilities under there. Even though they're moving those, and that's what he's speaking to here, they're gonna have to move some of those lines when it's going forward, and hopefully in the next three weeks, that will be complete. Hospital well, plaza well, open and repairs for backup, and we're working on those as well. And we're having a really good time cross-training. Actually, I gave Margaret the other day the budget for training, so we wanna make sure that we have training for our wastewater, our water, and even our equipment. We're having some of the parks department to learn how to drive some of those front loaders, so we're trying to be able to do that. TCQ, we're always wanting to make sure that they attend those, that they're doing a water system training workshop, December 2nd. We're having a free workshop for domestic water and system management, and of course, the destructive driving that the chief just spoke of is going to be a mandatory for our staff as well. We've already met with them and told them that they cannot be on their phones, and so hopefully we can complete all of our requirements for the destructive driving and maintenance requirements. Again, if you would like to have Mr. Best class to come and present to the council, I can schedule that for you.
Who's doing the training for equipment on learning how to drive a loader?
Our experienced, our experienced drivers that we have. We have very experienced drivers that are here, some that have over 20 years of experience. They're training other ones, and then we're having peeks to come in into training as well. But right now, it's actually in-house training.
Because I remember when you had a training program for, to learn how to use the...
Maintainer?
Huh?
Maintainer?
Yes, maintainer.
Yes, ma'am.
You sent him to tech staff for a week?
Actually, they came here for a week.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and we have...
They learn? I mean, is that to be a practice?
Yes. And maintain us using most in the streets department. And they use it a lot for our drainage, and we're hoping that we can get, go forward with using the maintainer to take care of some of our drainage and remove some of the dirt and things such as that that we wanted to do.
Thank you.
Henrietta?
Madam Maynard, yes, please.
Can you please tell us the status on Lowdy Park? That's, that's the only one that's missing here?
We don't have anything that we're doing right now in Lowdy.
So it's perfect?
Well, I wouldn't say it's perfect. It's just that a project that I have going right now for Lowdy. Lowdy's restrooms are okay. They were the first parks that had the metal in them. They didn't have, of course, they have the metal utilities, the sink and the urinal, but they need to have lights at Lowdy.
They have lights?
Well, they have lights, but they keep taking the copper out of the lights. We replaced them twice. The lights at the Lowdy basketball court, we're trying to take care, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to take care of the basketball thing, but Lowdy wasn't one of the parks that we had, that we were doing some restoration on right now.
I don't think so. It's fair that here are river parks, skate park, Mason, Kacon Park, all the parks, but just Lowdy Park is exempt. Let's, let's, let's focus on Lowdy Park too. Let's make them equal. Let's, let's make it fair.
Is that the same one that has the basketball park?
I think that's all they have at Lowdy Park.
I realized they had bathrooms there, because I don't think I've ever seen any.
There is a bathroom there. Yes, ma'am.
There's one there.
Yes, ma'am, there's a bathroom there.
Do we have an exit?
Do we have one, I'm sorry?
That's one.
Yes, there's best one next there, but they put up. And they did clean that park and take care of that park. We would love to add more fixtures and paint that park. And one of the things that I've asked when we talk to the EDC is to come up with the maintenance of how we can maintain it, because when people took the survey, that was one of the things, they said, "We're not maintaining our parks." And so what I'm asking is, what should we do to maintain them? What is the cost for us to maintain them, so that we can budget the cost to do so? And so that's what we want to do. With Lowdy, it's not necessarily off the radar, not a perfect park, but that's not why we're being, it doesn't have a project right now.
Let's, let's focus on that part too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are the financials for presentation.
Mayor, council, good evening. For the sake of time, I'm gonna go ahead and present our financials for only of the month of December. In your packet, you have November and December, and if you have, of course, any questions in the month of November, I'll go ahead and answer them. But every time I come and I report, one month is comprehensive, is year-to-date, okay? So let's begin with the front schedule. For the month of November, and let me go ahead and get started with the general fund. We have revenues collected year-to-date of $771,544. We have current expenditures year-to-date, $865,045. Let me go ahead and clarify these before you ask any questions. The reasons why we have less revenues than expenditures for this month is because, as you all know, my finance manager is out on maternity leave. I have the reports to be posted for the property taxes, but because of everything else that I have to do, W-2s, 1099s, I haven't gotten around to post those. The money's there, the money's in the bank, I just need to post it into the book, but I haven't had that opportunity yet. When I do go back and post these, they're gonna go back to the month that they belong. The only thing is that you're not, you're not seeing it right now. If you look at the report as a backup, you're gonna see that there's no property taxes posted for that, for this month. The next fund that I would like to report is water, water and sewer. And now, because they're split, I have to do both. These are major funds, especially because water and sewer are USDA projects. For me, I believe that it's very important to go ahead and give you up-to-date on what's going on with these funds. The water fund has a revenue of $365,797,000. Current year-to-date expenditures of $338,732. Mr. Miller, as per your request, I went ahead and I put the percentages of expenditures against the budget, and as you can see, for the water and, water fund, we have expense from the current budget, 23 percent, almost 24 percent, 2399. And I failed to tell you about general fund, we are at 21 percent. So we are in the first quarter of the budget, and for us to have less than 25 percent of expenditures, I think we are just right on track. For the wastewater fund 2222, the current revenues is $232,096. Your expenditures are $209,305. That is at a 17.13 percent. Like I said, we are just on track. These are the, the major funds that have a lot of activity. If you have any questions on the other funds, I'll be glad to answer them, but I don't think it's necessary for me to go over them. I would also like to speak about the schedules of the sales tax, okay? Sales tax right now, and I mentioned on my summary, that since the month of June of 2015, the sales tax have been going down tremendously, but not to the point where we have to scare about it, okay? So far, for the month of December, the total collections were $231,507. For the city allocation itself, it's $115,753. This is a decrease of $17,078 from last December of 2014. We have to just be very conservative on our expenditures, and that's the reason why I made sure that when I presented the report to you, I mentioned the revenues collected against the expenditures, so that way we see that we are only spending what we're collecting and not what we budgeted. That is very important.
That's my question, Madam Maynard.
Yes, please.
For October, November, December, we're losing an average of about $43,000 per quarter?
It comes and goes, it goes up and down. I wanna remind you that the comptroller, the Texas comptroller's office, they're behind two months on reporting sales tax. So if we are reporting the, the month of December, those are actually sales tax for the month of October.
Correct, but what, what we have on the books here, October, November, December, that's what you're talking about here on the books?
Yes.
So in, in that quarter, we've lost about $43,000 and a half?
Yes, sir.
So if, if, if it stays the pace that it's going, eventually you're gonna be about a hundred...
Mr. Ortiz, it's not the money that we're losing, it's based on what we projected for the year. So if the numbers are falling suit from what we projected, then it's, so we're not losing money here.
You're right.
It depends on what was projected. If you look at the numbers here, they're, they're tracking more like 2012, 2013 lots as far as money collected. So depending on what's, that's what I was looking for, to see what we actually projected for the year. So it's not necessarily you're not losing money.
And I understand...
But it must be over-projected for the year.
No, no, but, but we're, we're...
It's a valid point.
But where we're heading, you know, if, if we continue this pace, eventually...
If we continue, Mr. Ortiz, if we continue on this, on this line, okay, all that's gonna happen is at the end of the year, you're gonna end up with a flat line on sales tax. There's not gonna be any increase for the year, there's gonna be a major decrease on the year. When I do the budget, it's a, an estimate collection of sales tax.
I am not disputing that, but what I'm saying, the pace that we're going, that's where we're heading.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed, and that is a valid concern. And at, at this point, if we look at November's sales tax compared to November fiscal year 1415, it was down 11 percent.
Right.
We look at December's, it's down 11 percent. If we continue at 11 percent, we're gonna be $174,000 difference in sales tax received versus what was projected.
Right.
Okay? Which means, we're gonna have to do some budget cuts, because everything that was projected, okay, it, it, in revenue, was spent in a, in a balanced budget. So somewhere, we're gonna have to do some major cuts.
What we have to do is, we have to be very conservative when we're doing decisions on increasing the expenses that we already have in the budget. I, what I try to do is, everything that comes to me to be approved for any expenditures, I, first of all, I look at the line item, current balance. Once I look at that, if I see that we are still within the limits, and the item that is gonna be purchased is something that is needed, and then I'll go ahead and approve it. If not, I'll cancel stuff. I'll go ahead and go to any office people orders, and I'll cancel them. I'm trying to be very conservative, conservative on the expenditures, so that way we don't go above what we're collecting on sales tax. And let me remind you, Mr. Miller, that we're not just depending on sales tax revenue to operate or to cover the expenses of the city. We also have permits revenue, we also have miscellaneous revenue, we also have property tax revenue. So just be conservative on the expenditures. If we see at the six months, when I do the evaluation through the year, that we, our expenditures are exceeding the revenues, and then definitely, we need to go in and do cuts.
Well, and, and at six months, I would be concerned, but I'm concerned at the first quarter, in that, I understand being conservative, but I'm thinking, if we're 10 percent down in sales tax revenue, and the other revenues, property tax fees, franchise fees, are at what was budgeted, we're still gonna be short. We need to be doing some adjustments to those budget line items now, okay? I understand being conservative, but if we're gonna be, projected to be short in revenue, okay, that means we're gonna have to be short in expenses, and we need to be in front of that, not wait till we're halfway through the year, but we need to address those cuts in this, at the end of this first quarter, in the next budget. That's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
Yes, I've always asked for a balance sheet. Is it possible for you to include a balance sheet on each one of your reports?
Okay, you didn't ask me for the balance sheet this time, but if it's, that's what you want...
I asked for it in the last meeting.
Excuse me, ma'am?
I asked for it in the last meeting.
Yeah, but it was not stated that I had to provide it every report. Now you're requesting it, I will include it if that's what you want.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any more questions? That will conclude the presentation of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next report is the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packages, council, you have a report from the SARA conglomerate. If I can just review for a minute, that this was a report, an agreement that you all did, so that we work with SARA on the condition of the existing city park, as well as the land that's behind the event center. And if you look at the data report, that actually, when they went out and did some soil borings, and they said it had been for a long time, they actually report, I think the data report is... So they presented to, their findings to SARA. SARA came out and talked to me to try to explain to me, you know, what it is. Part of the deliverable for repay, and we have not paid, was split, splitting, and I think it's somewhere, the total cost was like $17,000, and we agreed to pay half, and SARA agreed to pay half. It's quite intensive. They could come and present, that's part of the deliverable, they have to present to the city council. However, I thought that it's gonna take some time and questions, and you all may want to spend a lot of time on that, and not necessarily just say, "Yes, I have a report." It's not a 10 or 15 type of report. So I was hoping that we could set up a February 4th workshop in conjunction with EDC. They have taken your directive very seriously as to being a part and a partner in the parks. And so as we're looking at the parks, this is definitely going to improve that. Now ultimately, one of the directions you have given to me is to have a plan for the parks, and so this would definitely enhance the plan. So I am asking if we can schedule a joint workshop dated February 4th to talk over the SARA engineering study, which you do have a copy of in your package.
Could you give us a synopsis of the report, Mr. Turner?
Just generally, I am not an engineer. They are really strongly concerned about the conditions of the soil there. It's sparsening soil, and I may not have said that word correctly, but bottom line is that it's solid on top, but underneath, it's actually caving in. And if you go to one of the fields, like, leaves or softball field that's furthest towards the river, you can see that light that's about to fall off into the river. There's still this concern about the condition of the soil. If we can continue to use that park, I just said, break it down to me, tell me, what can we do with this land? And they said, literally, you need to stay off of it, plant some trees, so that you can get some root and foundation, and move your parks, your playgrounds someplace else. Let's say, it's not, it looks like solid, but those holes are coming, and it's eroding a lot faster than they had anticipated. And I believe they've been doing that, I'm sorry, since when, when was the first study? Before I got here. I think they did one in 2010?
2010, and there was another one earlier than that, about 2004.
Yes, and so as the river goes up and down, the bank goes up and down, and, and my staff tells me that there was a time when the river really rose, that literally you could see water shooting up through those holes. It is not necessarily safe ground, but I want to have those engineers to come and get before you. We've invited other people to come, that have a stake, other stakeholders to come, so that we can ask those hard questions, so that you can make those hard decisions of whether we go from here.
Do you have a location at the time?
Yes, ma'am. Location, of course, will be here at City Hall at 6:30, I believe. Secretaries, that right?
Yes.
6:30 here, in conjunction with EDC. So both workshops, as you know, Councilman Tahan, I heard you when you told me, we're not voting on anything, even to accept the report, it's just so that you can have time with them. We've invited the baseball, the football and soccer, Ms. Ball was here earlier, all those stakeholders that play on that field, to come and ask questions too, because the timeframe is going to be important. But the good news, there is good news in this. The good news is that they did test the land behind the event center, and this is not a problem with that land. There's no soils, there's no corrosion, they're concerned about it. Of course, you can always fix it if you can throw enough money at it, which is a question that you need to ask the engineer. But from my proof in the report, it looks like you need to dig down between three to six feet, and put in compacted soil, which can be very expensive, and when your engineer comes out and reports and says it's expensive, I believe it's going to be expensive.
Ms. Turner, you, you've been here, what, maybe three years now?
I have to exact it. Yes, sir, I'm, I'm working my third year.
We've been talking about this project for 10 years now, 10 years, and your report, or the engineer's report that you're discussing, confirms again that the fields down there, the park, cannot be used for safety reasons. And I know there, there's people in the audience that have opposed a park for many years already. It's time that we come together as a community and do something right to, to take care of these things for, for our children.
Well, I know it has been a concern with Councilman Castillo, who's councilman and now mayor, she took a trip with the former mayor, and the attorney there was from Boot Sound, to see the actual field itself, and since you were there, Councilman, I'm sorry, mayor, it hasn't eroded a lot faster than that.
Yeah, several, two years ago, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Rosenberg and I walked it, and it was in bad condition. Do we have kids playing on it right at this season?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
And they're gonna be allowed to play this year, or is that gonna be a safety?
That is a question for the council.
Will the city engineer be attending this workshop?
A representative from M&amp;S will be attending this, and he specializes in draining, so it's not Tom Turk that you know, we see, or Nancy Turner. Yes, sir, there will be a city engineer at this meeting.
Because as I read this report, one of the biggest causes of this is drainage. If you look on page 11, 4.2, and two additional gullies have appeared near the river, having an estimated depth of 10 to 15 feet. These gullies have, have cut back into the swell area and have an increased, have increased in size and length since 2008, and especially in 2015. This is drainage that occurs primarily from the community center. So yes, we have an issue, but then, in the very last page of the report, and this is why I'm concerned about the city engineer, that we can look at the costs of this, because they have some detailed recommendations on how to eliminate this drainage, and then state, "Should it be determined that the expense and risk related to the maintaining the existing fields near the San Antonio River is not acceptable, then fields could be relocated to a higher elevation." And as you stated, they have identified some areas behind the community center. They're worse. So I, I think our engineers and some estimated costs at looking at this need to be presented as well.
Well, I have shared the report with M&amp;S, as well as Bure Engineering, and the initial request for SARA did not include the land behind the event center. But we did modify that to say, if this is not good, let's check the soil over here, because I know for some time, historically, it has been looked at, so I said, "Why are you looking? This digs and holes over there in the sea." And so that is definitely one of the things. However, M&amp;S, our engineering firm, who is actually doing the consulting right now on the rehab that we have going in mid-center, is looking at the drainage issue, because that's why that engineer's coming, he specializes in drainage, because the event center drainage is actually helping speed up their erosion, and so we need to address that. But also because there's no trees, there's no vegetation, those roots hold the dirt in place, but this type of soil happens around river beds, and so it is, it's clear problem. And in your, they have nice, pretty colored pictures. What they're trying to show you is that, as the tide span over Google Earth, you can see how the bank is regressing, and they're even concerned about if somebody, for some reason, wants to drive a car around their cutting monours, you may hit that, just imagine a cake, and you get it out in the middle, pretty soon, something's going to collapse. So they are really concerned. However, please note, they're just gonna say, the condition of the soil, they're not gonna recommend if you decide to let people continue to play, that's definitely gonna be your decision.
Well, if we know there's a risk, I mean, it seems like this council ought to be taking immediate action, and not waiting.
Well, we need, it's not like tomorrow. We need to have you...
How many more years do you think?
That's an engineering question. That's why I need to have them before you, so that you can ask those questions, and that Castillo, I would have to agree, we do need to take action, but I need you to make informed decisions on what you need to do, because if you tell the kids they can't play, I can't tell them where they can play. And so we need to have a plan B, but you need to have full understanding of what this report is, and I really want to take advantage of what we're paying for, and not come in as a freebie, we're paying for it, that they need to spend some time with them, and I'm willing to do so. So we're gonna have it probably in this room here, so in case people want to come, they do a proper presentation, and have it, ask all those hard questions to the engineer.
Ms. Turner, you and I were texting this afternoon, and you're saying that you wanted to apply for something in October. Again, that's another year down the road, for even us to be funded again. So is this, is this report of that severity, that we can wait, or...
Well, the application that we were talking about, your question, was the park plan, and so we can apply October 1, 2016, that's when they open up.
And we wouldn't know anything until summer of 2017?
I don't, I don't know what the turnaround time would be. Once we have a preliminary park plan, what I wanna do is take it to Austin and say, "Is this the right way for you to be able to fund?" But the bottom line is, if, if we don't get the funding, if we do get the funding, it's gonna take time, but there's a max, a 50/50 max. So again, there's budget concerns that you have to have. If you're gonna say, "We're going on our own and not use it," we still have a issue with money and funding of how you're gonna fund this park.
From my experience with Texas Parks and Wildlife, and Merrill O'Neal is the back, maybe he can confirm what I'm saying, but at the max, you're gonna get maybe 250. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's true. That's the most you can get.
Now, now, there have, I can't speak to, when Mayor remembers was mayor, but the new program, when we did a TML, and I went to three sessions of TML, they're saying that they're having a new funding where there are large cities and small cities, so they are competing, competition with each other, that you can ask up to a million dollars, but...
You can ask.
You can ask. I would ask.
And we can wait, and wait.
I'm looking forward to this February 4th meeting, Mayor and council, for you to have all those, and that's why I didn't want to wait until the 4th to give you the report. I'll have copies of the report at the meeting for you all, I have copies for anybody who attends the meeting, so they can all take a look at it, and so that's why I didn't want to bring it to you tonight. I need you to have a special meeting for that.
Well, all I know is that it was tough walking those sinkholes two years ago. I'm not sure, I haven't been there since then, but it's, it must be worse.
It's eroded a lot worse. Now, just so that I can understand, is there a general consensus, I know you can't take a vote, but is there a general consensus that you're in consensus to have a meeting on February 4th?
We have to take action?
No, sir, I'm just asking, is there a general consensus? I'm just asking, is there a general consensus to have a meeting on the 4th so that we can post it?
It's on a Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's make Thursday.
Yes. So we have general consensus. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm over here.
Call me, where? What are you?
That's Lou.
As you think about next Thursday and the report from the engineer, will you give consideration, please? I'm trying to stay on topic, Mr. Miller's always mentioned that issue. But I think there are two parts to your issue. One is where we walk, which is from the diamonds or the ball, real area fenced to the river. That's the part that's the most erosive, the most difficult to manage for you. If you go through the top layer, you go into the very fragile soil, and then you go down to the river. And I think and recommend that you give consideration next week to putting that area off limits with some form of proper suitable, whether you want to use that orange netting or something, that you put that area off limits to the public, barring some reason to be there, as a matter of public safety. All diamonds bear separate analysis, because they have hard packed surfaces and some protection and some basis for some further duration. But if you would, please, consider those two as kind of separate issues, one is purely a public safety issue, the other is the continuation of all diamonds.
Do we need a CNA for that for next meeting, girl?
It would be helpful if you're going to do more than a discussion meeting, to have a CNA for next Thursday, so you're not just sitting there talking, and you could have some action as a result of it. The answer is yes.
Okay, please. Lou, definitely.
I can put some serious together, but formerly, there were some council members who had strong feelings about having CNAs at workshops.
Okay, well.
But in our next meeting-
Consider it a meeting, then.
If two councilmen will come in and sign, I can, we can do it a special meeting.
Would you consider-
For Thursday.
A special meeting, well, to the sign?
And then you can-
Well, I think we're, we're in agreement tonight, I think.
Yes, sir, but you have to-
But I have enough to-
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
You mean prior to the 6:30 meeting?
No, my middle meeting is, instead of having a workshop, it'll be a special city council meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then we'll have action, and I'll confer with the attorney about what action I would see you'd like to have on that.
Thank you.
To address those issues.
All right, next we have Police Department. Body camera grant. We have more money coming, huh?
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll pass this out to the council.
Point the order, ma'am.
Just a picture of what we're doing, what the cameras are. If that's okay.
Mayor, point the order. You know, you were talking about the corrosion. How do you fix the corrosion on the baseball field?
Erosion?
Right.
Well, you can go walk it before we put up the signs.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not trying, I'm not asking-
No, no, I know, and I'm serious.
But what I'm asking is, I have experience in erosion and stuff like that. We did North Star Mall, where we dug 30, 10 feet down, compacted all the way back up with the North Star Mall.
I suggest that you go walk it.
Well, let me just suggest something. You already going to spend some money. And, and let the engineers give you whatever they have, and go find somebody else that, I, I, my personal view is, y'all can dig a baseball field and, and put at least six feet of compact dirt, and the baseball field's pretty good, unless the corrosion's really that bad that you have underwater currents. But that's, that's cheap as waste.
You're welcome to come to the meeting for the 4th.
Just submit a bid, you can submit a bid.
Yeah, you can submit a bid. Thank you. All right, sir.
Our good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gilbert Triggs, I'm detective with the Forest O.P. I'm speaking about the body cameras we're going to receive here shortly. The government's office allocated ten-
Please, I'm sorry, excuse me. Please. Thank you. Go ahead.
The government's office has allocated 10 million dollars.
Excuse me, off, where's our officer? We still have conversations in the back, please ask him to step out. Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, ma'am. The government's office has allocated $10 million to equip police departments and sheriff's offices with body worn cameras. No additional funding will be made available in the state fiscal years 2016 and 2017. The body worn cameras will serve as a tool for law enforcement's comprehensive problem solving approach to enhance officer interactions with the public, to community trust, and gather important evidence for use in prosecutions of crimes. With that mentioned, we contacted local agencies to gather consensus of various types of body worn cameras, since our department does not have the capacity to conduct such trial. In doing so, we considered three of the most common body worn cameras. It's a Taser Axol model, the WatchGuard Vista, and the Force Protection L10. Now, the Taser camera, which uses Evidence.com as an offsite storage system for video, has the most user-friendly storage interface of the three, but is the far most expensive storage option. The WatchGuard Vista has a good video, good, great battery life, and easy to download on a hard drive. The Force Protection camera was far as small as it still provide a good video, but the battery life is far too short. Therefore, we chose the WatchGuard Vista body worn cameras, which are the same camera system our patrol vehicles are equipped with, I mean compared to. As far as a grant, each officer will be equipped with a body worn camera, with a body worn camera by the grant, I'm sorry. Each officer equipped with a body worn camera by the grant service, trained, and the department receiving the grant showed out the policy for the use of the body worn cameras. Training has been obtained, I have it here, there. So the training has been obtained by Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, or TECO, and it's course 8155, which entails, which entails officers who will wear the body worn cameras, and other personnel who will come in contact with video or audio data obtained from the use of body worn cameras. The training will also incorporate hands-on training by a watch guard representative to each officer who possesses a body worn camera. The Texas Commission on Law Enforcement is drafting a policy for body worn cameras, which will entail the statute requirements, such as when officers should activate a camera, discontinue a camera. Provisions relating to data storage, storage of video and audio, creation of backup copies, and video and audio maintenance and data security. The WatchGuard Vista body worn cameras. Each camera costs $907 after taxes. After 10 officers, the total is $9,135. WatchGuard has offered a year warranty, covered maintenance and repairs. The WatchGuard is also offered training by a watch guard representative. As far as the grant, grantees must provide matching funds of equal 25% of the Colonel Justice Division award amount. Therefore, we request a $9,135 to include two terabyte external hard drive to archive the data. The Colonel Justice Division allocated $6,851.25, and we are responsible for $2,883.25, which the department will fund with seizure money. Only 10 body worn cameras were requested, because the grant specifies that only officers in gaining traffic and highway control, otherwise regularly detained or stop motor vehicles or recovery responders, to call for assistance from the body, from the public may be eligible for body worn cameras. We feel like equipping our officers with the body worn cameras, we provide a higher standard of service to the public, gain you valuable information, reduce numbers of evading arrest or detention, reduce numbers of arrests or resisting arrests, reduce the numbers for interference of public duties, and display the integrity of our fine officers. Any questions?
So you're, with all the commotion in the back, I missed your introduction. So are you applying for a grant for these cameras?
No, Mayor, I was just informing you of the body cameras we're going to receive meaning. The money is going to be coming from the seizure money.
We've already, oh, so you've already, we've already bought them, and we're paying for the safety.
You're going to award it the grant?
That's correct. Right now, we just, we submitted for a preliminary grant, we're going to approve, so the money has been allocated to the department. We now have to complete the formal application, and once that is completed, we can receive the money as soon as March 1st.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you.
Officer, do two things. You talk about $9,175, I think was the total figure you said, and that the preliminary grant approval from the email that was provided in our package was $6,851. The balance to be covered under seizure funds. You have two terabytes in here. What kind of ongoing maintenance costs are we going to have with this, and how are those going to be funded?
Well, ongoing maintenance, for the first year is going to be provided, it's going to be, it's going to be cost-free. WatchGuard is going to cover that, and they're out of Dallas Fort Worth area, so-
And after that, what is it going to cost to maintain?
After that, we're not expected to, they're actually very sturdy, and one of the representatives came through the department, I believe, yesterday, and showed us exactly how durable they are to submerge in water. They're very strong.
Well, I understand that, that we're going to have to be programming some kind of maintenance cost for replacing batteries, eventually these sorts of things wear out. And then the second piece is, along that same line, when you look at this grant, it talks about having adequate storage capability. What is two terabytes of storage going to give us with these cameras?
Okay, so what we decided was that, we came up with a two terabytes. With the year of, of our officers patrolling, having our in-car cameras, we've used less than a terabyte, less than probably three quarters. So we submitted for two terabytes, and that should last over two years.
So we would, we have two years worth of data on the car cameras right now, or a year's worth of data on the car cameras? Or does it recycle after 30 days, or what is that term?
There's a retention period.
What's the retention period?
Well, it depends on the call.
Actually, Councilman, what the grant requires is that we have a year, three-year retention period. That's part of the requirement of the grant.
Okay.
When the state of Texas earmarked is $10 million, they want to probably do some analysis on what we're using that money for, how we're using this body cams. After that, we'll probably go to a 90-day retention period, which is what most of our cases are now, it's a 90-day. But for now, for the grant purposes, they require three years.
And two terabytes is going to support that?
Yes, sir. We believe it will.
Okay. And then lastly, you talked about policies and procedures. Have they been developed yet?
No, not yet. I contacted TECO today. As a matter of fact, we're still drafting it. It's going to basically mirror the statute, the statute in front of me this evening. And so they can outline the policy for every single department, there's over 2,000 in the state of Texas. So they can come up with a frame, and we, of course, can add more simulations to it.
So we will have a policy in place before these cameras?
Yes, per the statute, officers before they issue a camera, they have to go to the training and receive, and understand the policy.
Okay. You brought me to a second point on this. One of the requirements is a resolution by the council. I think we need to get that on the agenda, so that you can get your final package ready for this. They have a draft version of it, it's the language that they want. And secondly, could you also ensure that whatever policies and procedures are going to be put in place for the Forestville Police Department, they, they are briefed to this council before this goes into action?
Yes, ma'am, that was our intention. What I wanted to do, and we're not asking for any action tonight, is to let you know that the cameras are here. And so we've been awarded, and I wanted to be able to give them a data boy, a data girl, depending on how it is. But we want to make sure that we actually let the council know. So when this comes in for you, I won't have to have it, please hear, you'll be familiar with the program. They did this on their own, I'm really happy for that. And if we could, just thank them for doing so, and being proactive with the meeting. The resolution and the dozen numbers and all those things to do the formal paperwork will be on your next city council agenda, February 11. Is that right, Madam Secretary?
It won't be that quick. I'm sorry, ma'am. It won't be that quick. We have, we have a deadline, I believe, of July something.
The paperwork, until they can get the resolution.
Oh, well, but that's part of the, that's part of the rest of the application, and the application's very lengthy and detailed.
It's just a component of the application.
It's a component. So you need to draw pieces of it?
No, I wanted to, what I talked about was seeing the policies and procedures for the department, the SOPs for the body cams. Before you implement that, if you could brief the council on what those SOPs are. The grant application, that's not an issue.
So we'll have whatever we need to pass with the council to come in for you, but I don't want the first time you hear about those cameras, as we were asking you to take action. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That completes all of the presentations, reports. Next, it's 12, it's 12:12. It's time for a break. Next is New Business, 3A. CNA to revise districts and tourist advisory board bylaws.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and City Council, I attend most of the meetings, and I did attend the visitors and bureau meeting, and they've had, my request, if you look on page 3 of 6, in the highlighted blue, this is, this committee is unique, where it has other entities that send representatives. And so sometimes, as you know, for you later on on the agenda, sometimes it's hard to get members to do. So what they're asking to do is to say that for the positions that's filled, that let that be the quorum, and the president or the chairman of this committee is here. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you. As Henrietta indicated, that board is made up of seven directors, two that are appointed by the city, one by the school district, one by the hospital district, another from the county, and one from EPC. Since the inception, and that's been like in March of that, last year, we've had two vacancies that have essentially never been filled, the hospital and the school. Now, rather than, and we have the authority within the bylaws, rather than cut the numbers down from seven to five, because the intent was to have as many of the major entities represented, I think we can base our quorum on the filled positions. And almost always, that's going to be about five, and leave the invitation open to the other entities, rather than just reject them. And this way, we don't have to not call meetings when we don't have the necessary board right now. I also, if you want to do that, and what I've suggested, have a caveat in there that we would never have less than three. In other words, a majority of the filled positions, but never less than three. That would be amending what we're recommending there.
I concur with what you're saying, Mr. Gonzalez. The, the, your language of keeping the invitation open to the hospital district, to the, to the school district, as well as the proposed language change, has your board approved that language change?
We did not have a-
With the caveat that you've added?
We, we, in essence, we all agree on it. We have not had a CNA, because the last meeting we had, we did not have a quorum. So we're asking the council to make that change on your own volition, which you have the right to do. Yes, we do.
Any questions, Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
All right.
Then I still move to approve the change in bylaws as presented with the amendment of not less than three directors. Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Citizens' comments? Excuse me. Any citizens' comments? None? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?
4-0, ma'am.
And a secretary here?
4-0.
Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
And Mayor, if I may, at this time, Chris Huck has worked very hard on this, and he's in the hospital today, and he had to have minor surgery.
He's out tonight, ma'am.
So he's out. So we just want to say, we want to think our present with him, and we don't want to forget Chris. We really do miss him.
Thank you. All right, the next item, it's CNA to approve Phelps' request to utilize City of Norizil Eastman.
Yes, ma'am. I can insert my notebook. Yes, ma'am. Now, this is a fee simple lease agreement that we have to, now, sometime ago, three days, Ms. Turner, the city council was deed of the property where the soccer field is. Timmy of Turner, the city council was deed of the property where the soccer field is. And just behind there is a new church, Christian Fellowship Church. Maybe the name of the church that's going to be there, the church.
Florisville Christian Fellowship.
Thank you, let me say it again.
Florisville Christian.
Florisville Christian Fellowship. They are located on the highway right now and they're building a new sanctuary there. And this is to allow Phelps to go onto the park, the soccer park, to get them electricity of what they need and so they need to have this easement from us. All the documents are there, we've met with Phelps, their designer has designed where it needs to go and so this is so that they can go ahead and have that utility easement for that. We made sure we stayed away from the cemetery, only on the soccer field and we did meet with the gentleman who runs the soccer field, Wilson County Soccer, and he states that he is not objected to this, he was part of our meeting that we had and so they are aware and it should not and will not interfere with the soccer field itself. So we're asking for approval, this is Phelps' standard fee simple and I believe the attorney has reviewed that, is that correct?
Mr. Rosenberg, any legal issues with this?
No, there are not. This is the standard easement that the Phelps people use. Review with the Wilson County Soccer League is okay. This is badly needed so the park gets served by Phelps and Turner has security for that parking lot and that parking lot is badly needed because we're really not safe out of that road.
How does this easement give us a parking lot?
Well, how this easement give us a parking lot is because we have championed and worked very hard and so it's a win-win, so let me explain. So Phelps has already tunnelled over, the church is paying for the connection to go under and go across. Now, the soccer field people have agreed to pay the additional, I believe somewhere around $7,000, that they need to pay to continue this, that they're going to occur because now the power is going to go through that lot where our driveway is, they are now going to be able to add lights to the field. And part of that because we're championing so hard for this church that we're also going to negotiate a agreement between the church and the city of Florisville to allow the soccer field people to use their parking lot for the soccer games, ergo, little parking of 97. So they'll have a parking lot to go to. So they're going to build a parking lot to accommodate the city of Florisville, Wilson County League.
So we'll see.